Clark, we are gonna get started here. Thursday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, school committee meeting. First thing is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting is being recorded by the Norton Media Center. And we don't have anyone in the audience, so I don't think we have to worry about anyone else recording. First agenda item here is to vote to approve the minutes of May twenty-third. Has anyone had, has everyone had any chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-third?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes four to zero. Dan wasn't a part of that meeting, so we'll leave him up. Next one is the minutes of May twenty-eighth.
What was the address? Or I just noticed when I was thumbing through the addresses of those candidates that were for appointment are incorrect. Well, I shouldn't say that. I know that's not my address. That's the only one I can verify is.
I was gonna say, how do you know?
Yeah, it was a very, very good.
Yeah.
Oh, for, okay.
Yeah, when it says the candidate profile under the address, that sounds like a spot out of my price range in town.
Okay, so can we just double check those and we'll make those fix? It's a pretty easy one to do. Other than that, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth minutes, everyone get a chance to review those as well?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes five to zero. Next is warrants, Sherry.
Oh, is that, I have a double of this, right?
Just read it what you said.
Huh?
Just read it what you said.
No, I know, I had a double, so I just was making sure I gave it back the minutes that we had to approve. I have reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and six dollars and nine cents. School payroll warrants for May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, one million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Wish to enter that into public record.
Thank you. Next up is Dr. Arken.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm gonna present some initial data from our new K to five math curriculum, which is stepping stones. Being part of our just ongoing conversation throughout the year, we wanna always look at and monitor our new purchases to make sure that they're having the impact that we want most, and that really is on student learning. And so what we did towards the conclusion of this year is we sent out a survey to all of our staff members. And additionally, we collected some data, which I would just like to share with everybody tonight. If we could go to the next slide or.
You're gonna have to.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you. If I can go to the next slide. So we collected response data from twenty educators across our schools. And that went from grades pre-K to five and special educators. And so really what we wanted to do is get a wide variety of responses, so that we made sure that all teachers across different areas and disciplines were included in our, in our data. And really what we were looking for is the efficacy of the program as well as next steps. So we do know that the program is really strong, and the data's gonna show that in a minute. Teachers had a high degree of positive response. We know now, as we go through after year one, we really wanna look at more small group instruction, differentiated instruction, and finding ways to make the curriculum fully accessible to all of our students. And when we look at the teacher responses on this Likert scale, one being least effective or not at all helpful, to five being most helpful, we're very squarely on the four and five range. So I think our teachers really like the platform, and I think the professional development and the meetings that we've had throughout the year, in addition to Tara Pierce, who's our PD provider, have really made a difference. And our folks, I think after year one, have been very comfortable. So we have some really positive data here. So I'm just gonna come over on this side, kind of from a color coding lens. So this is from a grade one CBM, which is a curriculum-based measure. And what it is, it's a periodic checkpoint, and really what we were looking for here was quantity comparison, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and skills. And so all of our students in all of our grades show increases, which I'll share with you in some previous slides, in terms of the number of students meeting proficiency. What I think is most notable is if you look at our spring data from last year, and then from our spring data this year, and from a color perspective, we want all of our students to be in the blue and in the green. And really, the red is the area we wanna avoid, so a couple of kind of high item actions. We see, saw a drop of eleven percent from twenty-one percent to ten percent in students on march and needing intervention. And then combining the columns in the blue and green, we have eighty-seven percent of our kids now at or exceeding benchmark, which I think is a real boon to us. It's a real positive first step. And the growth between last year and this year, I think, represents a real shift, and I think it's been really helpful. Another measure that we use is something called SGP, or student growth percentile. And that really represents a student's progress, measured against similar peers over the course of a year. So a typical band of growth is between the thirtieth and sixtieth percentile. If you have students that are above the sixtieth or, excuse me, sixty-fifth percentile, that's considered high growth. So if we look at the SGP percentile in second grade and third grade from fall to spring, if you look at the overall SGP, we have seventy-two point five percent, which is in the high growth. And then again, sixty-three point seven SGP, which is also in the high growth. Additionally, if we're looking at third grade, and again, these are broken down by school, we didn't label the schools, but they're represented here, again, eighty-two point two percent third graders, high growth. And similarly, fifty-eight percent, point two percent students, really solid growth. Again, anything above fiftieth percent, the fiftieth percentile, is well above average. We look at our third, so for our fourth and fifth graders, both of those SGPs exceeded the seventieth percentile. So if you look at all of these in totality, our students demonstrated really strong growth this year in stepping stones. So we never rest on our laurels. We always wanna continuously strive to do even more. And so we asked our folks to look at what high areas do you value of professional development? So the first is creating and differentiating centers. The second component is to incorporate small group instruction with stepping stones. The third is to continuously look at the focus and structure of our math block to be effective. And our final one is to continue to dive in more deeply, because this is a deep program, to really access all the features for the benefit of student learning. I think I just wanted to end with a little takeaway from our staff to give everybody a taste of what people said. And I think folks really enjoyed the lessons and the differentiation options. I think people were very satisfied with year one and are looking to add on components next year. And I think one of the big things that stepping stones does is it really dives into the conceptual element of math. So it's understanding that numbers represent something, and then constructing meaning from that understanding. And I think that that really came through in the feedback from our teachers. And then the fourth piece, which is something we talk about all the time, we have really bright kids. We wanna make sure that we challenge them. And so our educators were very happy with the level of rigor in the program. And I think now that we've had one year to get familiar with everything, I think we have a chance to go to an even higher level next year. So all in all, a very successful year one experience. Great. Anybody have any questions?
How many surveys were sent out? Were, did you only send out twenty, or were they?
So the survey was sent to all of the elementary, uh, elementary school teachers. And typically, when we send out, so we probably, we sent out to the whole cohort, it probably was more than twenty. As we found in the other surveys that we do for professional development, we have some people that respond, and we have some that don't. So, you know, we, we try to really actively solicit feedback from people. Try to create the conditions for, we want your feedback, we wanna extend these conversations, because we have to do the work together. And so I know teachers are busy and some folks don't take the time, but for all of our curriculum and PD, we survey everybody after each offering.
I think my only other question, like this data of grade one, I think it's huge from a visual learner standpoint, I think, if you will. You know, of going down from twenty-one percent in the red to ten, we basically stayed even in the blue, and then we, you know, made huge strides within the grade, which is awesome. Does, is that, is there a reason why we didn't do grade two and grade three on there as well, or is it just kind of what we had?
I don't believe that grade two and grade three did CBMs. We had started, we started with kind of proof of concept with the younger grades, and the hope is just to scale that up and outward.
Great, so like next year, we might be able to see a little bit bigger of a snapshot as we move along.
And then as we, you know, one of the things, one of the projects I'm gonna work on over the summer is to also look at all of our STAR data from the course of the year. And then when the MCAS data drops, usually in August or September, and try and crosswalk all three. And kind of look at, like, what, what does that triangulation tell us about where we're going?
So I guess my question kind of piggybacked on Nick a little bit is, if we look at this grade one now, which is great, but they're going to be grade two next year, so we still haven't seen what the current grade two looks like. And they'll be in third grade, and we'd have to rerun the first graders again, right? So that could be somewhat of a challenge to, like, not necessarily start from scratch, but we only have one mode of data.
Exactly, and the whole, our whole purpose is to continuously grow and scale upward and outward, so that we can have like this longitudinal picture, not only of cohorts and classes, but then having a tracking mechanism for kids that are in kindergarten in two thousand twenty-four, first grade twenty-five, second grade twenty-six, all the way up, so we can really have that lens on what our numbers look like.
I mean, I think when you talk about any data within schools, that grade level thing always comes in. But I think from, from my standpoint, especially sitting here, this is the type of stuff that, like, we'd love to see. You know, 'cause from an MCAS standpoint, we see it, we get it, you know, but actually having some, like, concrete evidence that, hey, we put this new curriculum, curriculum, thank you, we put that in, you know, we're moving with our ELA stuff, you know, next year. Like, this is the type of stuff that's huge to see, to say, hey, listen, you know, what we are funding in these things is coming back in a positive light is massive.
And what you'll see next year from the Office of Teaching and Learning, we will give regular updates on professional development. We'll give regular updates on progress. We'll give regular updates as they become available in STAR, just so that we can look at the trajectory. So I'm excited to dig into that work over the summer, because we, we are gonna start to see some additional, and what I anticipate to be really positive data coming from stepping stones.
Correct.
It's exciting.
And that just kind of mirrors all of our, all the data that we have, you know, and hopefully it makes that jump in the MCAS. You know, that's exactly what I think the committee was kind of looking for in terms of, you know, seeing these things actually on paper. Any other questions, concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Fourth agenda item here is update on, I know this might be a little tricky, but update on the fiscal year twenty-four budget and then the summer transfers.
Um, I'll do the summer transfers first.
Perfect.
Um, so we are looking for school committee vote for us to do end of year transfers between salaries or expenses. That would be anytime between now and when we meet again in late August. We don't anticipate any at this, many, if any, at this time, because we've done the small ones throughout the year that we've, um, have shown you. So, but if we do, we're just looking for a vote, and we will send you the backup.
So we're just basically giving you the go-ahead to?
For the summer, for the year-end close, yeah.
Just so we don't have to do it every time, got it. Do we have to obviously take a motion on this?
Yes, please.
Do we have any motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes five to zero.
And for the FY twenty-four budget update, there's nothing substantially new since the May financials that I've just given you, due to not being able to put some of the payroll and expense items, post those in our system at this time, and then print and review, until we get that capability, I'll give you that update.
Okay, and just so everyone knows, we had a cyber network.
I have a statement.
Oh.
Under other business, if that works for everyone.
So we'll pass on that. I think for this point, go ahead.
No, no, I just, I, I can comment later when Jen speaks, it's fine.
Perfect, so I think for now then, I think our best bet here is to, as we get the information, kind of just kind of table this, because we don't have exactly what we need just yet. We don't need a vote for that, correct? Next up, Dr. Roon.
Okay, so we are coming back to revisit the school committee dates for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. I know the committee had asked if.
It's a vote on the one percent budget.
Oh, I apologize, I skipped right over it. I'm sorry about that.
We're all tired of the budget, I said it again.
Sheesh.
Have to vote on.
Okay, so we do need to have an official vote on the FY twenty-five one percent budget of thirty-five million, fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. And the reason that we're coming back to vote on this is that the school committee recommended budget is not our final budget. So therefore, this has to be approved by all of you, so that once July one rolls over, we'll be able to start going through our process of encumbering funds.
Great. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five one percent budget?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes five to zero.
All right, the school committee had asked about potentially using the new town hall meeting space, which would give us a consistent space to meet, and would also, I believe, help Norton Media, because they are doing a lot of the meetings over there, which would help with our streaming issues and everything else. So when I reached out to the town hall, they are not able to accommodate us on Thursday evenings due to ongoing commitments with the select board. However, they are able to accommodate us on a Wednesday evening. So those dates that you have there, as you know, we always do, our first few meetings are our tour to our schools. So that would be the majority of our, our meetings. I would also say that the August twenty-eighth meeting would probably not happen in the town hall. I, I think that's right around the time that they're planning to be open, so I'm not sure that they would be ready and available for us, but they.
Is there a reason why we're doing a meeting so early?
I was thinking, this was, I will jump on this, I think. I was thinking that if we did one prior to school all starting, before every kid gets back in or whatever, and I think Justine had something to bring up on other, other, other business as well. I think that will be a discussion in a minute. But I think ultimately, I feel like every year I've been on this, we like get in, and it's, summer's moving, and it's like, star schools happened, and then it's just like crazy that first meeting. So it's like, if we can just get in, have a plan, make sure everyone's on the same page, it might be a quick one. Honestly, if we don't need to meet, we don't need an agenda for it, I have no problem. I think just smart to put a date out there in the event that we do need to meet.
So it's really just a placeholder?
Correct. I also think we might have, depending on what happens here on Jen, on July thirteenth, that we would have to have another meeting, we can get our, you know, budget squared away, that if that does happen. You know, obviously, from a state funding standpoint, I just feel like there's so many factors here that we might have a, it might give us a benefit. Starting a little, you know.
Have any issues?
Yeah, and again, I think.
It may not be around.
And again, if we don't, if we don't have an agenda for it, I have no issue, we just cancel the meeting, you know, so. I think to Jeff, to Jen's point, I don't know if town hall's gonna be ready by then. And again, one of the reasons I kind of made this push to do Wednesdays was you have a brand-new town hall in. I think it will help Norton Media, the new select, I think it's being called the select board room. You know, it's made for this type of stuff, so I'm thinking if, when we do presentations, it will give us a little bit better of a thing, and we're using the town hall. You know, it kind of gives a resonance exactly, hey, Wednesday night, school committee, you know, select board's on Thursdays, and this is where they're being held. You know, and obviously, our tours of the school and stuff will kind of supersede that, I guess, for the beginning, but I would rather have it. I don't wanna not do it and then try to get spots in there afterwards, 'cause we know how that would go.
I mean, I, I don't have an issue as of right now, but I mean, the only thing I don't want is if we start having joint meetings, we're always the ones that have to switch our dates. We, we're never the ones that are, you know, asked to be like, oh, we'll come to your meeting. And so that's why, like, Thursdays for me was easier, because if we're having a joint meeting, we know we just have to go to the select board room if town hall is ever finished. And so that's why, like, I preferred the, the Thursday, because the last thing any of us want, you know, is, we're having a meeting, then now we knew it was a joint meeting, and then, you know, it just, that's why I preferred the Thursdays, because we knew we could fit in a joint meeting, 'cause we know our schedule. I, I, I'm indifferent to the date, to be honest with you. I mean, we, when I started, we were on Mondays.
Yeah, but for a long week.
Yeah, and then I don't even know why we switched to Thursdays at, I mean.
I think 'cause it was the beginning of the week, and we were all, it was a tough day.
It was a long week after Monday night.
Yeah, I mean, Wednesdays are fine with me now that I'm no longer in high school and have to deal with sports. But I agree, like, I just, having another night of a meeting, we might have to alternate.
I mean, I, yeah, no, I think.
We have one to, like, invite one to us and one to them.
I think, yeah, and I think as chair, that would be, I will, I will hold that as a thing for sure. You know, we'll meet on a Thursday, the next one we do, we'll meet on a Wednesday.
Well, and, and the other part to that conversation is, the nights we have a joint meeting and each of us has agenda items, they never get done. Like, case in point, the last joint meeting, we had to bump half of our, I don't know if they did or not, but.
Yeah.
You know, so if we have to meet, we could do the joint meeting, say, during our session on Wednesday, and then Thursday, they could have their meeting, if they only wanna just come in for that joint meeting. And then we could do a small agenda if we had to, 'cause I just find, like, if we're doing a joint meeting, and we have a meeting either before or, you know, something like that, it just gets off track, and it can just be a late night.
And then you feel lost in which.
Yeah, that's what happened last time, yeah.
So I mean, like I said, personally, I'm indifferent to whatever date is as, as we sit right now. I mean, I'm not planning out four months from now.
We'll see how many joint meetings we do too.
Well, right.
You know, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think there should be efforts to have them. I mean, to me, we should be having one, I would say September, in preparation for springtime meeting, I mean, sort of fall time meeting. And I would like to probably have one in, in January to kick off budget season.
Yeah, I think we just be strategic when we, when we plan it. And I, like, I totally get you having the August meeting. I just, bless you, I'm just more like a kid that doesn't wanna go back to school. Legit have to, and just honestly, for our staff, like, it's been a heck of a year. And I just, I think that giving them July and August off, like, not, they're still working, but to not have to come to a meeting, I think it's just something we need to be considerate of, that they have their summer nights, it's, it still is summer.
Is that our staff welcome back any too?
So yes, we have.
So it makes a little sense.
Yeah, we have staff here, I believe, on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Okay, all right, then I don't feel as bad.
Well, that is the long weekend here.
Just like a good setup.
Yeah, if you guys are gonna be doing stuff anyway.
Yeah, I mean, and again.
They'll be.
We're all meeting.
Well, I know, but still, it's just, it's another, like, it's nice to have two months of no meetings, you guys.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
And I do think, this is just a, it is a placeholder. We do, you know, change these things around, we add meetings, we subtract meetings, whatever, you know, so I think, you know.
Well, I mean, I think it's one of those things where if potentially we're having a meeting, depending on how the voting goes in July, we probably could move anything.
True, exactly, exactly.
I mean, I, I honestly, I can't think of too much that's gonna be in the August twenty-eighth meeting, other than maybe stuff that happens over the summer.
Yeah, could be true.
Or even, I mean, historically, that first meeting of the year is very dry, there's not a lot.
Well, I mean, 'cause we just came back.
Exactly.
And so we usually, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think, I'd have to go back and look at what we typically do with that first meeting. Off the top of my head, I'm thinking maybe hiring, updates, those types of things. I also think that, you know.
If there's any new staff, they typically would go to those.
Yeah, they usually go to their school one, yeah.
I feel like that might be a good date to possibly talk about, like, an update on the IMTSS and the PBIS, and like, what's the plan if, like, over the summer, all the data was looked at, and this is what we're gonna do going forward in the fall, and like, we noticed at the high school, this wasn't working, so we're gonna try X, Y, and Z going forward, or, like, I don't know if that, I assume that's what happens, but I don't. So I guess that sort of was my thought too, on if we had a meeting before school started, then we could all be on the same page. Because I think the PBIS and the IMTSS and all the acronyms, they definitely, like, throw people in the community off of, like, what does that even mean? Like, I went to a CPAC meeting, the last one that they had, and there was a new family that was there, and everybody was, like, throwing out various acronyms, like ICE Block and LLB, and she just was, like, sitting there, like, I don't even know what's happening. What is that, you know, so I, I feel like, I maybe, maybe every town is like that with acronyms, I don't know. Nor is very big in the, the, the acronyms and like all the things, so I don't know, I just, that sort of kind of, when, when Nick had kind of talked about maybe having a meeting before school, I was like, oh, well, maybe that's a good time to, to kind of, this is the plan for these particular programs that, you know, where we have, and this is the data that we have, or, you know. 'Cause I, I'm kind of curious with PBIS, like, did office referrals go down? Did, I don't know, was there any other trends that happened? And with IMTSS, did we have, you know, I mean, obviously with the stepping stones data, like, that looks really great, but like, what, how did that system work? How was the feedback? Did the teachers like the system? Is, is it easy to refer? Is it easy to get kids RTI or whatever services that they need? Did it help prevent maybe further regression, and then maybe a need for an IEP? I don't know, like, I don't know what kind of data you can get from all of that anyway, but like, I just think it would be nice to know with, with all of the stuff that's going on, where, where we're at, I guess, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm indifferent to the days and times, but I just think if the joint meetings are gonna happen, it's.
No, I totally agree.
Agenda, like, open and almost closed.
I think between me and you, we can make sure.
Yeah. And then I just, I don't wanna be double stacking weeks' meetings and.
Correct, of course.
Well, and I think we need to be strategic on, like you said, when we plan these joint meetings.
Yeah.
We can't just, hey, we wanna meet next week.
Yeah.
That's what we used to do. It used to be planned out that it was more geared towards what was happening, that, that we needed to talk together, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Er. Do we have a motion? To. Do we need a vote, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then we'll share these with town hall to reserve.
Perfect.
A potential space. Yet to, yet to be created.
So do we have a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school committee meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. Jen again?
Okay, so we ran out of time at one of our prior meetings to approve, review and approve the elementary handbook as well as the high school handbook. And so I'm gonna start with elementary, if that's okay. Elementary is almost identical to what we've had in the past. We've included Mr. Paul Barrett as the new principal of JCS, and all of that contact information has been updated on page six, the attendance policy that we have worked on this year, that you saw included in the other handbooks that has been added as well. And then finally, on the last page, which is page thirty, there, they added a statement about recording in school or on school grounds. While it isn't necessarily as much of an issue at JCS and LGN, the large majority of our fourth and fifth graders do have phones, believe it or not. So we wanted to make sure that this was something that the committee had talked about and felt pretty strongly about, so we wanted to make sure that that was also included in this elementary handbook. Other than that, the large majority of, everything else is the same as previous years, other than those items highlighted. Yes, Dan?
Can we get?
Can we get, um, like, the, the PTOs and, and maybe even at some point the booster clubs, can we just kind of get like a large overview of what they're discussing? Because I know in years past, we used to have representatives for each school, which we don't do anymore.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm just kind of curious, like, if the PTOs have a posted meeting and just can send us a copy of their minutes, just, just for our records.
Sure.
Um, just to make sure that, um, you know, we kind of know what's going on. Because I feel like there's a, there's a little bit of a disconnect between the PTOs and the school committee and I'd kind of want to get back to that at some point. Um.
Brilliant, yeah.
Because I know when I started, we used to, we used to have a representative for each one.
And then we switched it, so we switched, because we were going to so many meetings.
So many meetings, yeah.
And so then we switched it to the PTOs or SPOs coming here. And given we did that, yeah, yeah, they did.
Yeah, they never asked. Did they?
Yeah, yeah, it might have just been one year, but we did do it. Well, I think, I think it actually was right before COVID, I think. Yeah.
Okay.
And then everything, we just didn't get back to it.
Because I know occasionally we'll see like the PTOs, if they have like a big program, like where it's the, um, you know, whatever school's doing, the, uh, s- s- playground. I was gonna say swing set, but it's a little more or less like. You know, like, we only hear about, you know.
Big projects.
Big projects where, and again, it just, just in, in informational, we don't need to come to a meeting, but you think we can kind of know what's going on. Because I think it's like, we get stuff from the student reps about what's going on in the schools, but, you know, there's a little bit more. Because I mean, you know, I, I kind, to me, there was always a disconnect because I never had kids that went to the LG, so I never knew what was going on over there. Um, so I kind of welcomed, like, we used to get a little report sometimes, uh, from what happened. Because in, in that dialogue, you know, was, was good because we opened up communication. Like, I remember, you know, I was the yell rep for years and it was like the first time they did the trunk or treat or something like that, you know, that was.
Mm-hmm.
But like I wouldn't have known otherwise because I, I wasn't a parent of a yell child at that point, but.
And I think the large majority of principals have their parent board rep or someone there when they do their, when we do the school visit, when we do the meeting at the school. And usually, I feel like they sometimes speak or will introduce themselves and talk about things that are going on. But I think the more consistent we can certainly, I mean, that's easy, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, just so we know what's going on, because I mean, if we, if we can help them, if it's a fundraising thing.
Right, right.
I mean, you guys obviously have younger kids than I do. I mean, my, my kids in high school, like, I haven't seen a fundraiser for the high school that, you know, just donate this or that or buy a sign or, you know, so I mean, it's very lax at the older levels.
My favorite is the unfundraiser, where you can just send a check.
Yeah.
That's my favorite fundraiser that my, my kids have ever done. It's amazing.
That's why I love, I love.
Send a check and leave me alone.
Yep.
That's what I remember about the middle school. It's like, if everybody stands in this, we cover all of our stuff.
Easy enough, yeah.
No, I think, I think Dan's point is like spot on to, you know, because it does, you know, I mean, yeah, some of us have, you know, obviously high school kids, some have, you know, JCS or whatever. But it's like, I'm sorry, Sherry.
Just got to cry again.
Yeah, exactly. We had the overall, under one, so.
Well, and I think too with the student rep update, sometimes it's like, they tell us about things after, like, oh, this happened this week. And they're like, oh, that's great. I wish I knew before him though, like, you know.
Yeah, well, some interesting things.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, to Justine's point, I think, coming from you at some point over the summer is, because we'll have a new rep, presumably.
Yes.
Um, there needs to be like, they need to make sure they're communicating with the reps. Because they're, if they're not at their meeting, then it's up to them to tell us the, the cool stuff happening or the spirit week or this, like. Like, I had to ask my daughter, because I, it was actually kind of funny, some kid was walking out with a wagon from the high school last week. But it was the, where the seniors, junior spirit week. I'm like, why does this kid have a wagon? He's like, it was anything but.
Anything but a wagon, obviously.
And it was cool, but I didn't know about it, you know? I'm not in the know. And my kid just decided to not share it with me till I had to ask her, so.
Well, and I also, um, one of the things that, you know, we always know that communication is a huge challenge and that, you know, unfortunately, as part of our budget cuts last year, we lost that communication and media part in, which was Korean. So, um, I, I'm super excited because next year, Central Office is going to have a high school intern who is going to be our social media and communications intern. Um, and I've already met with him, Karen and Pam and I met last week, was that last week? Was it this week? I don't even know.
It's all running again at this point.
To kind of sit down and talk about all the things that we would like to see this position do. Um, and our goal is that we have somebody every, every term moving forward. And just we create a system and a structure that is, this is the role and responsibility of this particular student and this is what it's going to look like. It happens to be that our student intern is also going to be your new student representative, Benson Chang. And so, um, he will have a great outlook for you. Um, and I'm actually gonna meet with Benson and Antonio, um, once school starts, before we start back up with the school committee. Um, just to kind of talk about some of the things, like, I love having the updates from the five schools, but the role of the student representative is also to provide you guys with feedback.
Yeah.
And so on specific issues, it's important to have them here so you can say, what do you guys think? And so we haven't really done that those, these last few years, so I'll be meeting with them. Um, and I did excuse them for tonight because it is the last day of school and I thought, no one wants to come hang out with us tonight.
Yeah, that update would be, everyone get out next to those of JCS.
Yes, they're still there.
It is crazy because like when you actually hear from, I remember when we were on the search committee for Brian, we had a student on it. And it's like, you hear it from a student, it's like, it does give you a different perspective. You're like, oh, wow. Every time, like, you know, obviously interview multiple people, and we were like, Callum, what do you think? Like, it was great because you've gotten, got a different view of like, you know, of, of kind of how it looks and what is this person kind of gonna do, you know, within the school. So, I think that's great. I think the more we can put on the students, and the student not put on, but the more they can give us.
Yeah, that feedback and that voice is really important. Okay, so we just need, um, sorry, we got totally sidetracked there. Um, we need a vote on the elementary handbook.
Mike, can we just go, the recordings piece?
Yes.
Should we add something in there about a punishment or?
I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we, we have, you know, progressive discipline protocols within the, each of the handbooks anyway. So that would be how it would go.
Perfect, okay.
The principals and, or assistant principals always go to the student handbook and, and go through the processes.
Yeah, because with the progressive discipline, you can't have, it's going to be X, Y, or Z.
Yes.
Because if it's the first time or the fourth time, it's gonna be wildly different.
Perfect, okay. Um, do we have a motion to approve the elementary handbook for twenty-four, twenty-five?
So moved.
You guys are telling me that, huh?
I'm letting other people.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't here for the discussion.
And I'll be seconded, so, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So four, zero, and Dan's abstaining since he wasn't, not the presentation.
I feel them wanting to go second.
Right, that's why you're abstaining.
Yeah, I was, I was persona non grata for that.
Alright, um, and then we have Norton High School. So there are a few more changes in here. Um, the first is the attendance practices, which, um, is the same language that has been included as the, um, within the middle school and the elementary handbooks as well. That was all done by our chronic absentee committee, um, that Dr. Ackerman has led over these last several months. Um, then they also took a look at the honor code, um, which include, has been added to include the use of AI um, in their work, um, and talks about the, the students that use AI without express permission or as part of the assignment. Um, there, that is discussed. Um, there is language around PBIS, um, and what that looks like at the high school. Um, and that has, because of, that was added this year because of, um, the, just the newness of the program at Norton, at Norton High School. Um, they've updated the concussion policy, which is something that was updated earlier this year to, um, more closely aligned with the actual regulations. We had not updated our concussion policy in almost ten years. Um, so that was something that was really important for us. Um, as well as it talks about the roles and responsibilities of the school and of the family and of the student as well. Um, for those of us who have children that have had concussions that are sports-related injuries in the past, we know how, um, challenging it is and how difficult it can be to get kids back in school, um, and caught up. So, um, that is all really laid out, um, there for us as well. Um, the comprehensive threat assessment guidelines language, that is, uh, the C-STAT program that we have, um, entered into with, um, Mass, Massachusetts Children's Hospital, um, and the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth. I have to say, I know our SRO spoke to us about this earlier this year. Um, this C-STAT process has been, um, just an incredible asset to our school counselors, our school leaders. When we're addressing a threat, it gives us something to, or, you know, our concern about a child, it gives us very specific guidelines and steps to walk through. Um, so this has been, um, a, a huge benefit to, to those people. Um, finally, oh, sorry, not finally, a few other things. Um, we are switching out our student information system, that was part of last year's budget. Um, anything that was school-brained will now be power school. Um, our team is spending a huge amount of time right now trying to finalize all of those things and get everything moved over. Information about credit recovery in summer school, the fee adjustments, um, and then just cleaning things up in terms of page numbers, et cetera. So, um, I know that I had reached out and I said, if you guys had specific questions, I would make sure that the high school team was here tonight. For a lack of not hearing anything, so I told them that they also didn't have to come tonight. Um, so if you have any questions, I will do my best to address them.
The C-STAT, they've been using that this, this past year, right?
Yes, going through professional development. And then the beginning of the year is when we really started it with our teams and it's been really, really valuable.
Anything else? So do we have a motion to approve the Norton High School Student Handbook as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining again.
And Dan will abstain again if he cannot be.
Every year when we re, um, coordinate, it, it always takes a little while for people to like settle into their new spots.
Yeah.
Right, Sherry? I feel like it always takes us a little bit of time, so we'll get there.
Um, and number eight, last one, other business, anything, uh, for the greater good before we take off for the summary?
I have something. I just want to give, um, a little update to the school committee and to, um, the community. Um, so in, in an effort to remain transparent, we wanted to provide everyone an update on the network outage. Yesterday, families and staff were notified that earlier in the day, we detected an issue that was impacting our network environment. Upon discovery, we promptly took steps to secure the environment and began an investigate, an investigation to determine the nature and scope of the issue. Our investigation is ongoing and we're working with a computer forensics, um, team of specialists to import, uh, to, excuse me, restore our impacted systems as quickly as possible. Um, it's important that we will be reaching out to staff, um, especially our staff that works year-round. Um, we may need to make some adjustments over the next week or so, um, as we get all of our systems back up and running. Um, and that would potentially be some of our, you know, year-round staff working from home where they do have internet access. Um, so we have been kind of working and trying to figure out exactly what that's going to look like. And Mrs. Winsor and I will likely again have another conversation after this meeting and figure out what that communication is going to be and exactly kind of what, what those steps will be as well. So, um, we thank you all for your patience. We know this has not been ideal over the last, you know, two days of school. And, um, I also just want to commend our staff, who has done an incredible job of, um, you know, taking lemons and making lemonade and, and being able to pivot and being willing to be flexible, um, and to our students as well, especially our high school students. So, um, we will definitely provide updates as we are able.
So, kind of circling back to the comment or question I was gonna have earlier, not knowing there's a timeframe for this to get worked out, does that, um, like handicap Christine's ability to close out the books for the end of the school year? Like, do we anticipate we may have some, some overflow into the next fiscal year that we have to have, you know, bills written that way?
So we're very fortunate that a large majority of our systems that we use are, um, cloud-based. So for example, our student information system, um, our payroll, our HR and payroll systems. Uh, we do have a lot of things that we utilize on a day-to-day basis, um, but it should be okay. I, I mean, we're still, the investigation's still ongoing, so it's really difficult to say it'll take this long or any of those things. We're, we're still kind of learning new things every minute or so.
And just from, uh, I think this is important to get across too. From a safety standpoint and confidentiality with the payroll and the students' information, we're pretty confident that that's all secured.
The investigation is ongoing.
Got it, okay.
And, and, and we are very, very fortunate to be working with, um, very high-quality computer forensic specialists that this is what they do all day, every day. Um, so it's, it takes a little bit of heat, I think, or weight off my own shoulders. I know that it's, you know, it's been a lot for these last couple of days, but it's, these people, this is what they do. So they can go in and exact, and figure out exactly what's going on.
And then hopefully sooner than later, but we don't actually know, once we kind of get to the bottom of it or whatever, you'll come up with something, obviously, since we're not meeting.
Absolutely.
Quick statement, perfect. Anything else? Any other business? Motion to adjourn? So moved.
Geez, do I know what he's had second? I'm literally like a kid on vacation, let me go. That's why I was in no IAP classes.